Conference meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mack, for joining us. You know, thank you. This is our September 7, 2023 conference meeting in preparation for our September, what's that, 11th? Regular meeting. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have a special presentation this morning. David Clark, the CEO of Visit Mobile, is going to give about a 10-minute presentation on a recent hour-long presentation that was given a couple of weeks ago. They had some research done, and they just completed a strategic plan. And Commissioner Hudson and Kelsey and I attended that presentation, and it was quite interesting. And the work that y'all are doing and Mobile County is doing is going to make a significant difference. So I asked him to come and share this information with us here today. Commissioner, do you have anything to add since you were at the presentation?
I think you covered it all. It was very informative, and it really confirmed a lot of what we all kind of suspect, but it gave us the numbers to prove it.
David, come on down. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. And on behalf of Visit Mobile, we appreciate everything that the county does for us and you commissioners. And we had an eight-month strategic plan with a lot of collaboration with many of you. And we engaged with MMGY Next Factor. They are the foremost tourism destination experts in the world. And it was exciting to have them onboard. They have 360 clients worldwide. You can see some of the clients that they have gone through assessments and also their master plans throughout the world. We particularly have two components of this. One, what's going on in the world of destinations, and then I'll take you through that. I cut about 30 slides to do this in 10 minutes, so I'm going to move through it very robustly. If anyone wants a link to this, just dial me in at DClark@Mobile.org, and I will give you the full presentation via email. But this first part dealt with trends throughout the world of destinations for the last few years. The study is updated every two years. It had 375 destinations in 12 countries and 830 participants in 62 countries filling out the survey. And there were market trends that were identified, uneven recoveries, outdoor experiences, purposeful travel, resiliency of meetings, technology impacts, and fierce competition. These were the main six market trends that were identified coming out of COVID. The 23-Future study identified and had four global advisory panels of probably 400 key executives throughout the world. They were disruptors and customers and industry partners and community involved. They identified 50 trends and 50 strategies throughout the globe that were, you know, key to destination success. The top trends, I'm not going through the top 15, but I don't know if you can't see this behind me, but I highlighted yellow, particularly that hit Mobile County and our city. Artificial intelligence is becoming a really big thing, and it's prevalent, and it's accelerated. For example, you might think that's a little bit nuts, but if someone wants to come to Mobile and they want to get, say, "Give me a quick itinerary of the five best historical attractions in Mobile County," bam, it spits it out, right? Meeting planners will now say, "Give me an itinerary of how I can meet in Mobile," and AI spits it out. This is a really big thing. If you see, I think it's, that moved 84 points, that little red arrow, plus or minus, that's from two years ago that you see. But that was the number one thing that came. Number two, customers are increasingly seeking a unique, authentic travel experience. They want to engage with people and experiences when they come to the destination. Greater industry, community, and government alignment is driving destination success, competitiveness in the brand. Resident sentiment is becoming a key measurement with tourism. DMOs and CVBs are increasingly advocacy to communicate value to the visitor, economy, and to the government. Travelers are seeking more personal enrichment and well-being. Short-form video becomes the new currency of destination marketing and storytelling, and I'm talking videos of less than 20 seconds. And there's a greater focus on equity, diversity, inclusion of belonging in the workplace and throughout the supply chain. The top strategies that were identified, again, these are top 15 of 100. Protect revenue resources to maintain current funding levels, focus on developing authentic experience for the customer, better integrate tourism and economic development, you know, together. Build the destination brand around community goals, values, and creative energy. Have a greater role in destination product development, and develop a destination master management plan to define long-term strategy. Couple other highlights, develop and support new events in the destination. That's becoming a really key thing, and improving local sentiment to increase support for the visitor economy. Our destination next assessment results. In essence, this was developed, and this is about 10 years of, again, 375 assessments worldwide, and how you define a weak destination or a strong destination. And there's two variables. Really, there's, it's alignment with that. So you can be an explorer, mountaineer, voyager, or trailblazer, and where you want to hang is that top right corner, which is a trailblazer. We're not quite there yet, but about 60%, I think, of the destinations that have gone through this, that's about 180, are below that line, or they're hanging in the explorer or mountaineers. Good news for Mobile in a second. But the destination strengths and variables, they were measured by attractions and experiences, arts and culture, dining, shopping, entertainment, outdoor recreation, convention, meetings, events, and festivals, sporting events, accommodations, local mobility access, destination access, community infrastructure, and health and safety. I'm reading those because I think those behind me can't see that screen. And the alignment variables in the survey included business support, community and residential support, government support, organizational governments, workforce development, hospitality, culture, EDI and B, funding support, and certainly regional cooperation, sustainable and resilience, emergency preparation, and economic development. We sent a survey out. We mailed over, emailed over 1,000 qualified surveys. We had industry engagement, which consisted of our board, the staff, the hotels, attractions, restaurants. We had a community engagement that consisted of government, business, community, economic development entities, local foundations, nonprofits, and education. And then we had our market engaged, which were our meeting planner, tour operators, travel agents, and event planners. And what we found was there were 169 respondents. Oddly enough, that doesn't sound like a lot, but since this was very super-targeted to key stakeholders, they wanted 120. We got 169. You see that about 46% of the industry partners were part of that. Community leaders, Visit Mobile, our team, the Board of Directors, government leaders. I think most of you filled out your survey, so thank you for that. Good news for Mobile. We got above the line. We had extremely strong alignment with our destination, with our community, and with you. A little bit weaker on the product development. But the good news is with what the county is doing and what the city is doing is I think we'll be a trailblazer within three years. I'll talk about that in a minute. But really good that we're above the line and we have really strong alignment. You can see that our Visit Mobile team rated us the lowest. We were kind of tougher on each other. We'll go over those scores in a second. Our government leaders rated us the highest, that little red dot. In fact, our government leaders thought we were pretty much right at the trailblazer, about ready to get there. So that's your vision, right? You see, you're kind of looking out there three or four years. Destination strength, you can see that the green is where we were above the industry standard of all DMX community assessments of 375 destinations throughout the world. That was basically your arts and culture, conventions, and meetings, and accommodations. And you saw some of the red there. I'll go over that in a second. Our destination strength, highest and lowest variable scores, the highest, arts and culture and heritage. Accommodation, attractions, experience, conventions, events, and festivals, our lowest scored were destination access, local mobility and access, health, safety, sporting events, and outdoor recreation. We'll talk about that in a minute. The highest scores that were driving that, a 4.39 on unique historical attractions, almost a 4.0 on high quality of arts and structure. Destination access, you know, was one of our low scores. Airport is accessible with public transit was our lowest score. Airport is state-of-art, low score, but we know that's changing, right? And it's moving downtown, so we know that that's going to change. And mobility and access, another low score. Wayfinding signage, public transportation, bicycle-friendly, kind of all kind of low. And we know that. Some others that you see, health and safety. One thing that you see, safe from crime, 2.27, not unique to other destinations throughout the world. All destinations took a hit on that. But, you know, our consultant said, you know, I know Mobile, and you know, we'll get through this, but other destinations are kind of low, too. So destination alignment, really strong. We are above, Mobile is above alignment compared to every destination throughout the world on every category. You can see that destination alignment was, the overall score is a 3.76, the average was a 3.55. Particularly those that were green and really high were EDI and B, government support, hospitality, culture, emergency preparations, and sustainable, and resiliency. Another one was workforce development. So all very high scores, the highest I just went through. Some of the lowest scored variables were kind of oddly workforce development, funding support, and certainly certainty, and regional cooperation, sustainable, and resiliency. Some of the things that were driving, a workforce development, low score, affordable daycare options, public transportation for workers, affordable housing, and funding support and certainty was graded a little bit low, and sufficient funds for attracting events was the lowest score of that. Some key takeaways and the summary. Well, we're a voyager. We're above the line. We've got strong alignment, and we're getting even stronger with our product development. There's the key takeaways. Develop a plan to fully activate the waterfront, engage in both public and private sector with investments and new product. Create a shared vision of the importance of place-making. Use advocacy to help Mobile achieve many items stakeholders want to improve, including gateways, appearance, wayfinding, accessibility improvements, crime prevention, capital improvements, increased communication with the local stakeholders. And we're going to have a marketing plan that has some fun cruising and airport promotions coming out the next month or two. Initiate discussions about future funding opportunities. Our strategic plan, again, we had one-on-one interviews, local focus groups of about 10 to 12 people in each group, 170 surveys, and lots of planning sessions, and a one-page summary of the master plan. Our new vision is to elevate Mobile as a leading tourism destination, the city that is born to celebrate, really nice and easy, kind of fits with their tagline, and our mission, attract visitors to experience mobility, increase economic impact, and sustainability. I'll let y'all read the rest. Our values didn't change. We have targets with specific takeaways that will change yearly. This is a three-year plan. Can't thank you enough for your support. And some of the things I wrote down that came to mind real quick that are driving our product excellence, we'll thank the commissioner, especially Commissioner Lugood. Heritage Tourism will be one of the biggest things for Mobile to drive tourism for the next many years. The opening of the Afri-Town Heritage House, the civil rights sites being developed downtown, the DFFHT. Heritage Tourism is the largest segment tourism growing in the world, and thank you for your vision on that. We have the soccer complex. We have the Aquatics Center coming on. We have the reopening of the Lynxman Golf Course, and we have waterfront public launches. The marketing fund that you give us and those resources are driving meetings, 40 million of impact a year. Their sales managers are selling from those resources, so thank you for that. And that's it. 56 slides in about 10 minutes.
Well, at some point, will there be a follow-up here? We'll see, kind of gauge how we're moving along and keep us posted on progress.
We will, all the time. Any other questions?
Oh, no. I just want to keep the Mobile County Blue Way Trail on your radar. We're going to be able to respond to that outdoor recreation low score in the very near future.
Absolutely. Lots coming online.
Yeah. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, David.
And he gave me several copies of the one pager, and I do have a few of the, a couple of the full abbreviated versions of his slide deck printed out if anyone wants them. Thank you, David.
We want to know when we get to be trailblazers.
Do we have any other speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay, Mr. Hodge.
Number one, approve the list of claims. Number two, approve the application.
Excuse me. Commissioner Dewey is home handling a little, the kind of emergency that only a commissioner who lives in a really, really rural area in Mobile County could have. He's got to have a new well, and so he's dealing with that now. And that's the only reason he's not here today.
Okay. Number two, approve the application for Lounge Retail Liquor License, Class II alcohol for, by Ramp Enterprise, Inc., for Cottage Hill Package Two. Number three, approve a sponsorship agreement with Sims Women's Club, Inc., any amount of $500 from District Two Commission Funds for its Sims Christmas Tour and Shop Hop Event. Number four, approve sponsorship agreement with Mobile Arts Council, Inc., any amount of $1,500 from District One Education Funds for its annual Throwdown Artists. Excuse me. Number five, authorize the right of entry permit with the Student Conservation Association, the nature conservancy to allow golf course team members to assist in maintaining Mobile County conservation lands during the fiscal year 2023, 2024 at no cost to the county. Number six, authorize amendment of the procurement of policies for use of state and federal grant funds. Number seven, authorize subreciproney agreement for Mobile Arts Council, Inc., for a term of October 1st through June 30, 2026, any amount of $295,000 according to Mobile County's Strategic Spending Strategy for American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to support Isom Clement Park improvements.
What sort of improvements are they going to be working on?
This is statutory. We competitively, Mobile Arts Council on our behalf procured the, I think it's six sculptures or something. And that's, and that's going to, that, those sculptures will build out the theme of the park.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Number eight, approve amending, July 20, 2023, minutes, agenda item number 19, appropriation contract with the Water Works and Sewer Board of the City of Pritchett, any amount of $25,000 for fire hydrant inspection, verification, and repair program in the City of Chickasaw to divide the source of funds as follows. Number nine, approve change order number one with Diversified Maintenance LLC for janitorial services at Government Plaza. The change will increase the contract by $49,645.26. The new contract total will be in the amount of $562,744.26.
Question on that one. Why the change order, Tyler, and this didn't have to be rebid for that amount?
No, ma'am. We're under the 10% rule of thumb there, and this is still here at the Government Plaza, so it made more sense to add it to the existing contract. And what we're doing is we've lost four employees in the custodial department, so we're consolidating those to some of the upper floors at the North Tower, and we're going to continue to add floors to the janitorial contract. We'll rebid this next year, I believe.
Okay, so it's just adding to the scope of work then?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Number 10, approve change order number one with Relent Contracting LLC for Revenue Commission Taylor Window. The change will decrease the contract by $1,225. The new contract total will be in the amount of $47,625. Number 11, authorize advertising for one-year floor covering replacement installation at various Mobile County facilities. Number 12, approve change order number four with JMP Construction Company, Inc., for Mountain Burn and Water Treatment Plant upgrades for reconnection of existing water pressure alarm located at Mountain Burn and Town Hall. The change order will increase the contract by $3,006.32. The new contract amount is $2,357,056. Number 13, approve assignment and assumption the ground lease dated November 9, 2020 between Mobile County as landlord and Providence Hospital as tenant, now known as Ascension to University of South Alabama for that certain premises located at 35 Cody Road South, Mobile, Alabama 36695.
Is that a gateway entrance into?
Is this, I don't know. It's the property between Ochelle and Airport Boulevard, west side of Cody. It was, county owns the land. Boys and Girls Club built, they built on it. It was 50-year lease. It started in 2020.
There's something on it other than the sign?
Yes, yeah. It's, so I'm not sure what gateway means, but it's been the, it was a girls' club vertical structure for many years.
Oh, that part of Cody.
You remember that.
Okay, yeah.
We owned the land, and it was somehow the lease with Providence. I don't remember the genesis of that. And now that Ascension is buying the, or USA is buying, I think, from Ascension, they asked for simple assignment of the property, or the lease agreement from Ascension to University of South Alabama. In fact, Nick Lachas is here, and if you want to address that anyway or not.
No, that's, that's fine. I was just, I was trying to visualize where this was, but it's a Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
Which will be in my district, so.
I think so.
So good to know.
And there's been, I'll just mention for the commissioner while Nick is here, there has been a soft ask if one day the county commission wanted to give or donate that property from us to the university. They still be subject to lease with the Boys and Girls Club, but that's not the ask today.
Correct. So as you all know, University of South Alabama is purchasing Providence Hospital, and that transaction is scheduled to close on October 1st. But before, this has to happen before closing. And at some point, where I'm not as familiar with it, but my understanding is, is it's county land, and then Providence, Ascension leased, leased between the county and Providence, and they built the structure that's there, and then that structure has been leased at $0 rent to the Boys and Girls Club for 30 or 50 years.
Fifty years.
So as we are now going to be the owner of the building on October 1, the lease just needs to change between county and Ascension to county and USA for the remainder of that lease term with the Boys and Girls Club.
What was the remainder of the term?
Twenty-six, 27 years left to go. 50-year term. Started in.
Do you want us to go ahead and, are you ready?
Whether you do it today or you do it money doesn't matter, as long as we get it done before the October 1 day.
I'm okay today if you want to.
I know, I will, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Dewey, but I know when he didn't have any objection to it, but.
Okay.
He doesn't. I would represent it to commissioners. Commissioner Dewey was good with it. I think Nick knows that as well.
That's correct. And hopefully that historical background helped. So, thank you.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve this.
Thank you.
Since, since we have Nick here.
Thank you.
If you weren't here, they wouldn't have had a Nick.
Much appreciated. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Number 14, approve appropriation contract with the Association of the Study of African-American Life and History, county branch, in the amount of $10,550 from District One Education Funds for operational expenses. Number 15, approve agreement between Mobile County Commission, the Department of Human Resources, and Mobile County Investigation and Recovery for prosecution of child support, in the amount of $2,105,392.50, 100% reimbursable to Mobile County Commission for the period of October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024. Number 16, approve professional services contract with Bay Nursing, Inc., to provide nursing services for detainees at Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $50 per hour, $75 per hour for holidays and daytime, $120 per night visit, and $180 per holiday nighttime for James T. Strickland Youth Center. Number 17, approve professional services contract with Lynn Young, MD, to provide medical care for detainees at Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $36,000 for Strickland Youth Center. Number 18, approve professional service contract with Susan J. Lee, a registered and licensed dietitian, to provide professional food service management consulting services at Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $60 per hour, not to exceed $12,000 for James T. Strickland Youth Center. Number 19, approve professional services contract with Stephorek Psychological Consultant LLC to provide training, oversee, and support evaluation of masters-level mental health professionals in conducting psychological evaluation of juveniles at Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $18,750 for the James T. Strickland Youth Center. Number 20, approve professional services contract with Dr. James R. Stephorek to provide psychological evaluation for detainees at Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $1,000 for completed evaluation, and $100 per hour for court testimony for James T. Strickland Youth Center. Number 21, approve agreement between Mobile County Commission and The Bridge, Inc., to operate individual and family counseling and case management services program, an in-home counseling program for boys and girls in the amount of $1,066,460, the funding provided by the Alabama Department of Youth Services Grant. Number 22, approve contract amendment number one with Bert Klein-Peter, Inc., for settlement reduction pavement of Dolphin Drive, Perch Drive, Johnson Road, Henry Johnson Road, and Sunset Road to complete the engineering and design. Costs associated with the contract will be reimbursed by the restored grant, Mobile County Dirt Road Paving Program. 23.
I'm sorry. I thought Bert Klein-Peter was no longer doing business, that they had, someone had assumed all of their contracts. Am I dreaming?
You're correct. I believe engineering had an agenda item back several months ago to reassign all the contracts from BKI to Thompson. Thompson acquired all of BKI's operations in Alabama. What we did is, instead of going that route, since this is a federal grant, is to have Thompson perform the work as a sub to BKI. So the contract is still with BKI, but Thompson's doing the work.
Okay.
So, so the contract for this particular project is with BKI still.
Okay. Who's on the hook? If something goes wrong, who's on the hook?
BKI would be on the hook, but they're, you know, BKI and Thompson negotiated the contract for Thompson to do the work. So some of that would be between Thompson and BKI. But ultimately, the contract that we have is with BKI. So from our perspective, BKI is on the hook.
So we're, we're fine. They'll just have to look it out.
That's right.
Where is BKI located now, if they're in?
I'm not sure. I believe, Louie, do you know, Brian, Louisiana?
I think Lafayette, Louisiana.
That's where they originated.
Is that why they pulled out of our area primarily?
I don't know the background for what led to Thompson acquiring all of their operations in Alabama.
Mr. Klein-Peter died.
Well, I knew he had, but, but he had several people that were in the business that, you know, family members that I didn't know if they had taken over and.
They still have their company, just not in Alabama. So Thompson didn't acquire all of BKI. They only acquired BKI's contracts and maybe their staffing here in Alabama. So just the operations in Alabama, BKI still exists.
So they're just downsizing their operations, but they're the, they're the lead on this one.
That's correct.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Number 23, approve appropriation contract with Alma Bryant Football Boosters. Number 23, approve appropriation contract with Alma Bryant Football Boosters Club, any amount of $5,000 from District Three Education Funds to help with the cost of wrestling mats at Alma Bryant High School. 24, consider taking the following action on bids. 25, approve professional services contract with O'Neal Publishing in amount of $6,000 from District One Commission Funds to provide digital platform management and consultation services. 26, approve appropriation contract with Blunt High School Boosters, Band Boosters, any amount of $12,888.57 from District One Education Funds to help the Blunt High School band with the costs associated with transportation fees to the Magic City Classic Parade.
Would you just add Birmingham, Alabama?
Excuse me?
Would you just add Birmingham, Alabama, the parade in Birmingham, Alabama? Thank you.
Okay. 27, approve appropriation contract with the City of Saraland, any amount of $1 million from District One Carryover Funds. Project involves widening Celeste Road to three lanes to allow for a two-way turn lane at the intersection of Celeste Road and Twin Lakes for the City of Saraland Sportsplex.
Okay, I think that should be widening, W I D E N I N G.
We'll make that change, Commissioner.
Thank you.
28, approve business agreement with Comcat, Inc. to implement Comcat's co-enforcement manager and GIS module, any amount of $9,950 for a term of one year for the Environmental Services Department. Number 29, approve renewal license with Time Clock Plus LLC for monthly recurring cost of $1,746 for one year for the county commission. 30, accept award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $1,626,190 with no match, no local match and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this award. 31, accept a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Home Program in the amount of $679,551 with a 25% in-kind or cash match and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this award. 32, approve renewal software license with H S H I International Corporation under the current purchasing operations of NEA Partners IT Solutions, any amount of $14,991.08 for the Revenue Commission. 33, accept a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions, Solutions Grant Program, any amount of $148,416 with 100% in-kind or cash match and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this award.
Is Gord, hey Gord, so we, we at one point had stopped getting the E S G money, so we're back in the game again?
Good morning, yes, Commissioner, we had a homeless population that reached the threshold that the HUD has reinstated our E S G grant for this year.
Okay, so that, this allocation means our homeless population, our homeless census is up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
34, approve a master service agreement with threat advice for monthly network security review, monthly recurring cost of $364 for 36 months for the IT department pending legal review. 35, approve professional service contract with Peter Ross and to provide computer networking and IT services at the Strickland Youth Center in amount of $88,000. 36, consider approving amending the 2021 capital improvement plan to add the following project estimated cost. Also approve and amending the 2021 capital improvement plan to revise the estimated cost for the following projects. This amendment real allocates $92,613 from South Creola Drive roadway improvement project to Franklin House renovations and real allocate $660,000 from unnamed projects to public works camera system for Camp One, Two, Three and Four and real allocate $140,000 from unnamed projects to electronic control access gate and fence at Camp Two, Three and Four.
There's a typo on that, you need an S on that last reallocate.
We'll make that change, Commissioner. 37, accept petition for changing the street name Rebel Court within Mobile County, Alabama and adopt a resolution for changing the name to foul River Court pending legal review.
What does a legal review have to find out?
We just create a resolution, it's really, it'll be ready to go, it's simple, simple. We just got a letter from them, Department of Land, Bureau of Land Management, Fed's asking the name to be changed, we just didn't get a chance to get it completed.
Okay, so that's what legal review means on this one?
In this case, that's what it means. We'll have it. In other cases, it may mean something different, but.
Subjective.
Okay, and 38, approve request of the sheriff's office to add an internally purchased vehicle into their fleet. It will not increase the fleet numbers and they will turn in a vehicle yet to be determined as follows. And that's it.
Thank you. All right. Brian, your agenda's so long, do we need to take a break before you start?
A body break, yeah.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Monday, we will ask that you consider taking the following action. Item number one, adopt a resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the following public streets as listed, bounded by the territories annexed by the City of Saraland. Item number two, adopt a resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the following public streets as listed, bounded by the territories annexed by the City of Sims. Item number three, approve agreement with the University of South Alabama on behalf of its coastal weather research center to provide weather forecasting and warning services for a one-year period in the amount of $4,600 to be paid out of one of our technical services account. Item number four, approve a preliminary and final plat of revised Swift Mobile subdivision that's in Commission District Three and the preliminary and final plat of Collier Estates, which is also in Commission District Three.
Okay.
Hopefully that is it.
So we do, we're going to be posting a temporary phone number on the Mobile County website and on social media. Our phone lines are down, our phone carrier is down for most of Mobile County's lines, not engineering and public works, because they are still on the old system. So their lines are working, but the others aren't. And so we'll have that phone number if folks are trying to reach us from the general public, so, and that'll be up until our lines are working again.
Do we have any earthly idea when that might be?
We don't, we know that our carrier is experiencing statewide outages and they have not given us an indication of when they'll be up again. We're hoping it's just a day or so, right?
We're hoping.
All right. Anything else? If nothing, we stand adjourned.